To be safe. Will the district consider forming a committee to look at the boundaries? I think it's time. Times have changed and communities are changing and I think it's time that this district look at boundary changes. Thank you.
Russell Greenay, I'm a parent at Lincoln. Let's have a question about the whole, this whole issue and it's a simple question. What's our basic goal here? Is our goal to teach kids another language or is our goal to teach kids? And I feel like this is America. I speak Spanish. I'm happy for my children to speak Spanish because you know what? Some of them aren't able to handle two languages. And yeah, what's our goal? What are we trying to do here?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
As educators, we promote dual immersion because we know that the people who learn two or three or four languages, people with more than one language are better problem solvers than people with a monolingual. And we've learned that through brain research, through all kinds of research. And so we offer it as a, because we'd like our students to be successful. And but as a board, we have to decide whether or not we want a school that is open for, you know, when we say school of choice, I always thought that meant we could have not just dual immersion but all programs. And in as far as a boundary, we didn't have to decide what kind of school we want there. If we want an all-inclusive school where there's, with several kinds of programs, we can change the boundaries. You know, we can make it work, but we just have to decide what kind of school we want, that's all.
Yeah, and we came from a, we came from a, or actually we were pushed out of a charter school because of the agenda that that charter school had. And we live in the neighborhood. We thought we heard great things about Lincoln. We wanted our kid to go there and he has learning disabilities and he can't handle a second language. And you said, you said offer. You offer all these research things saying, oh, we, you know, research shows that this is a better way to do it, but research also shows that some kids can't handle that.
Yeah.
And, and you said the word offer. It's a great thing to offer, but we need to offer our kids things that they can handle. And like the man said before, I don't want to drive my kid to school when I, when I can throw a ball from my house and land it in your, I mean, I don't know. Close the school, reopen it as a charter, if that's, if that's what the agenda is.
I think this is one of the very few portions in the, in all of the meetings that I've been to where there has been a very thoughtful and heartfelt parent population to come up and really want to express what it is that they're, they want you to know so that they can be an informed parent population. So just like I'm asking questions, I don't get answers. For the sake of transparency, accountability, and you know, maybe we can get this right for once, would you be able to explain to us how you would be able to address what it is that the parents, the questions that they've asked? I couldn't hear the gentleman's name, but he asked, what's the goal? And I think it would be great if the board could get together and go through the notes from Lydia, go through the questions, go through the concerns and put something out so that the community will know that you care, that the community knows it's not just going to go off out into, you know, a black hole and then it just starts again. So I just would like to ask for you to consider how you will address what has been asked tonight and the concerns that have been brought to, to you so that maybe it could be a time to rebuild the trust. Thank you.
So one of the things we were asking the board for is a little bit of direction around the program options. What I heard today was, is a possibility, which is, it's one of the options of looking at re-boundary, looking at re-establishing boundaries, which I have to tell you is expensive. But if that's something that you wanted to engage in, and now that's a year-long process, I would assume that you began that somewhere in the fall by what Rosie exactly said, is you formulate a committee. You have stakeholder diversity on that committee because you're looking at re-establishing boundaries. It's not going to be just Lincoln people, it's going to be people from throughout the community. There were reasons, I think, why those boundaries were not established from what I heard from the interviews that I conducted. And again, that's why I think they came up with the title, with nowhere to be validated as a school of choice, that those boundaries are wide open to anybody inside, outside the district. And so either that or we can, that's opening another whole different direction for that school.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
In terms of re, in terms of redrawing the boundaries and, and opening that discussion up, my concern there is, right now, we're talking about displacing one neighborhood. If we begin to redraw boundaries, you're looking at many schools where children will be displaced. Children who have started those schools were now going to have to be moved to another school before they finish, you know, their exit. So when I look in terms of how many families, how many people in the community are going to be affected by a boundary change, I think we need to really think long and hard before we say, yeah, let's just study it. I, I think that needs to be something, I think we need to look at the enrollment of all the schools, you know. I know that Sean has mentioned that there are schools that are very large and I think that's a problem, but I would imagine that those parents there are very connected to the school as the center of their community. To be told now that you're going to be going, you're going to be bused to another school, you're going to upset those parents. So I mean, I, I don't know, that's not an easy answer. The other thing is, I don't think we should make a decision as a board to change a program, I mean, to decide on a program right away. I think, I think we need to really think this through. And I think if we have time to look at all the factors a little more closely, I think if we have time to talk to all the parent groups at Lincoln. You know, we hear from some, I am aware, you know, I've been contacted by many different groups of parents, so I've heard many different stories. So I, I just feel like everyone should be heard, not just certain groups. I think the staff needs to be a part of, I mean, I think there's so many pieces that need to be put in place. We have a new principal. I think we need to give him a chance to see, you know, what he can do. So I'm, I'm just asking for time. It may not change anything, but at least with time, we have an opportunity to, you know, listen, listen to others, you know, listen to what's going on and, and help parents know what, what's happening instead of just, you know, saying, okay, let's act on it. So those would be my two comments. I, I am really concerned about looking, you know, re-looking at boundaries just for all the families that are going to then be affected, not just the families in Lincoln, but families at other schools. One more thing, this whole idea of school choice, there are many parents in this audience who use school choice. You don't attend your neighborhood school, you attend, you know, you ask for an inter-district or an intra-district transfer. You go to a charter school, you go to a private, I mean, there, there, people have choice. That's the nature of public education these days. Someone asked me about neighborhood schools and I just said, you know, the days of our sweet little neighborhood schools are kind of going by the wayside. People have so many choices and I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing because parents, you know, they want what's the best for their children and so they make a choice. What I am concerned with is when it is your neighborhood and you want to attend that school, to be told no, you know, the school is open but only for a certain type of child or a certain group of people, I do have a concern. I'm not saying that that's not going to happen because if the numbers, I mean, you know, it's, it's also a fiscal decision. So I mean, there, there are so many things, it's complicated. But I do believe in choice, I do. I think that that's the nature of public education these days. That's all.
I do have a clarification question as we talk about numbers. So one of the driving forces behind this is, is to be fiscally prudent around our decision making. So we have Monterey Park School with less than 500 kids. We're not maximizing the facility and we're not maximizing the staffing there. So that's, you know, something to consider. But the other question I had, we had five applications for that school, right? For the SEI program?
Yes.
And on your PowerPoint, you said Lincoln neighborhood, you said five.
Right.
Are those five standing applications or, because at one time we had five and then it went down to three and then now it's back to five?
So we have two.
We have two?
Two. But we decided to enroll only.
Okay. So that's, that's what we're faced with. I mean, you, you have some numbers here, but the reality is, we have three families that will be affected in this, in this program decision because we have not accepted these intra-district transfers and we've not accepted the intra-district transfers. And I think so, that's what we're faced with at this moment in time, whether we have the kinder classroom there next year and we still can investigate what the future of that, of that school will be over time. But for right now, it's about this kinder placement. And I'm hearing, and that's why I wanted to make sure, that I'm hearing that you have three applications from the Lincoln area.
Five, one, two, two.
Oh, two, two. Oh, wow. That's, that's the decision, that leads to, I mean, that's why we brought you this information. There are other considerations, both long-term, but there's a short-term decision that is being driven here. So we went ahead with the information we had at that point in time when we had classroom preferences based on our master agreement piece and it looks like even since then, it's even less.
Unless we have deadlines for inter and intra-district transfers, the deadline, what they hook the, someone has to.
So there won't be any more coming in?
I wanted to mention that I agree completely with what Amy was saying about the boundaries and so on. My concern about shifting boundaries is that, you know, we need to gauge, we need to really look ahead because we can be creating a much bigger problem when we do something like this. So it's something where we have to, we have to tread cautiously and give it some time, give it some time and see, you know, just really look ahead, analyze it well and look ahead. Because, you know, we have different, different facets here, you know, different programs and, and somebody is going to be negatively impacted and they're not going to be happy. And, you know, it's just something we really need to look at in a very profound way before making a decision.
I'd like to address this gentleman over here. I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Russell Greenay.
Russell, I'm, I'm right with you, man. I mean, I live a block away from the school and I got a youngster, he's got special needs as well. And I can't utilize that school for either of my kids now, so I gotta drive them, you know, over to another school. And I wish that, you know, I could just walk them across the street, you know, but, and there's some other problems too, you know, with, with parents who've got kids who are enrolled at Lincoln already and that guy, youngsters are about to start. And if they don't want dual immersion, then they can't be with their sibling. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of that, you know, to consider and it's really tough. It's going to seem really unfair, but at the same time, these decisions are also being made for fiscal reasons, you know, what's more efficient for the whole, you know, for everybody to.
At one point in time, there seemed like there weren't nearly enough people for a kinder class, but they have been forced to choose dual immersion.
Right.
And now we don't have enough because they were, you know, they were forced.
Right. Oh, ma'am, yes.
Hi, I'm Laurie Sanders. I have witnessed firsthand a neighborhood parent come in to enroll and be told you can enroll in DI or you can't enroll, you'll have to go to Market Park. I was an office witness and whole thing. So there being only two, does it make a lot of sense? Even a lot of parents, they've been told no, they haven't been told, here's a waiting list, let me put you on the waiting list. You need to go to the district office. They were told, no, you cannot enroll unless you're in Olympia. So.
Yes, okay. Something we gotta consider. Okay. Anyone else that's heard it?
Just want to make other, one more comment. I just feel, I'm joining Palace's speech and language, following this with the district. And I think we need as a whole group, work together to try to make sure that the priority of the students that attend Salinas City Elementary School District are the key focus.
Thank you.
You without me. Okay. Is that it? Let's, are we ready to move on to the next one? Okay. Here's what's favorite, the LCAP.
Well, I want to leave me superintendent of board members, I'm Laurie Sanders, and I'm here to present to you for your information, quick proposals. We have a draft LCAP that was published on our website. And it's been a long process and your president is part of it. We have been bringing to you as part of our annual update process, goal by goal, some data. And some of the suggested changes have been coming from our input session, stakeholders. It really, you have to thank our Z-Lab parents. We had two Z-Lab meetings that were specific, specifically on LCAP. And then we had two meetings with our parent advisory committee for the LCAP, which is made up of members of the school side councils, that's all four of them schools. And then we had two joint cap in the meetings and these sometimes went on homes, like now, until after 10 o'clock and they hung with us and they really, really made this very live, vibrant process. I do want to begin by claiming out an error I made on the board analysis under fiscal impact. I reported that the impact of the supplemental concentration, that it is $16,914,768. It's actually 63, I was off by five dollars, but I want to bring it to your attention. So it is made to rest. Okay, I do think I need, yeah. So with that, we're going to go through, oh, okay. Our LCAP, by the goals and then by the actions. Okay. So under goal one, our first action, it's all about professional development. And if you, I did put on here the page references in the LCAP, so if you actually wanted to look up the line items, it's there for you. Professional development is covered on page 89. So one of the things that we are adding, and again, we're talking about significant changes that we're making in 1617 to our current LCAP, which was the 1516. We are adding a .7 teacher-owned special assignment specifically to support our intern teachers. We now have a large number of interns. We don't anticipate that that number is going to decrease next year and they need as much support as our teachers that are in induction, who've gone through a credential program and are just entering the profession. And they have to have the same support. We also are funding for them mentor teachers with a stipend, just like the induction program, $2,300. One of the other things we know we need to do with professional development is really branch out and look at online resources for teachers and options so that they have on-demand, self-directed coursework that they might want to take. Professional development needs to be rich, it needs to be varied and it needs to be differentiated. And so we have not, unclassified. These resources obviously looking at, well, of course, we're bloodborne pathogens, sexual harassment, they do often goes online, a lot of packages. We have not identified one, but we have a provider that we're looking at. We've already listened to presentations on behalf of two. We have set aside time for that in the LCAP. We also set aside two days of certificate for DM for professional development. We know that next year, we are going to be making decisions about a language arts adoption. We're also developing with a teacher cadre, units of study, and so that we're going to need to have more than the two days within this school year to get ready for next year. Okay? And again, I just mentioned the development of the units of study, we are working with a consultant. We are providing teachers who are doing this work, this, a stipend. They also have increased the amount of money for professional development for our classified. That other main thing I really want to point out to you though is that our professional development focus areas for next year, there's really four. One is English language development and as our superintendent has said, and I, I think our teachers know, it's an area that needs our attention. The achievement of our English language learners has definitely been flat and we need to dig deep and really look at programs and strategies and instruction that meets their needs. Again, looking at also digging down into standards-based language arts instruction. Another thing, we are, we are, we have a lot of data, but are we necessarily using it in the right ways, for the right reasons? Are we data-rich but not necessarily driven to make decisions by that? So part of our professional development will be actually working with teachers on using data to improve instruction and to make instructional decisions. And another thing that you're going to see in this LCAP is that we're not setting aside a large sum of money to buy more devices. We have devices and we need, our teachers need professional development on how best students can use them to increase their own achievement. And it's integrating technology into learning as well as instruction. Another area in instruction, this really very much came up in with our parents and with our surveys and they want to see teachers hired for visual arts, performing arts and physical education. And so in addition to our two music teachers, this LCAP includes a proposal that we hire two visual arts teachers, oh, yes, and then two physical education teachers. Additionally, in the past, we had classroom teachers, this year it was 13, to decrease class size in TK through three and now we're increasing it to sixth grade. This also helps a lot with combination classrooms. We're looking at additional support for transitional kindergarten and early childhood in instruction. I think you'll see that we have some exciting innovative programs going in like Footsteps of Brilliance. Now that, that program is purchased, it's not a, there's no cost for the program, but we do want to make sure that we are building on that kind of a platform and offering more to our students and to our families. And then of course, we are starting, and I've got it loud and clear, from our stakeholders that they would like to see enrichment programs. And we will be starting in the fall with NASA Saturday academies that are all over our schools. We'll have 2,275 students participating. They go through a, an eight work, eight weeks Saturday. We'll have four schools at a time doing it and then it'll be the next eight weeks, a different four schools. Very, very excited about that. And actually today, Mr. Dillinger and I were over in Hard Knell. It was our first day of our summer NASA program. And we got to see the kids have their first day in college. It was, it was really, really very fun. Okay, and so now I want to introduce to you our student information and assessment coordinator, Virginia, who's going to talk about some of the changes in assessment.
Okay. So with action number three on assessment, we have additional support and training in the data composite, not what Sandra was saying. So using assessments to modify improvement structure and basically looking at the formative assessment process, which is to continuously gather evidence of student learning and to help teachers identify specific strengths and weaknesses in certain learning relative to learning the standards and our goals. Second bullet is an assessment to measure Spanish language acquisition for students in dual immersion classes. So one assessment that actually has been identified is the AVANT. It's the same one that the high school uses for their biocultural, I think, seal. The action that we're looking at is online, it has different components of reading, writing, speaking and listening. So that, that's going to be for us. The next bullet is additional assessment personnel to increase access to accountability data. And looking at data, like Sandra was saying, we have a lot of data, but in order to be able to meet the needs, we're noticing that that's a little bit challenging. So we're going to be looking at maybe other districts where counterparts do and seeing how that is developed, I'll be getting some ideas from them. And then also looking at, for a local assessment to measure English language development. As you know now, we only have one assessment that we use for that, which is one time a year, which is the self, the California English Language Development Test. And so there's something with our, as Sandra was saying, with our English learners just flatlining, there's obviously a need to be able to look at maybe an ongoing type of assessment for that. So with action number four on technology, just clearly define roles and expectations for our technology lead teachers and how they can support the staff, the protocols there. And then as Ms. Sanders was just saying, it's really not necessarily ordering more technology, but just how, the way we're going to use it. So more qual, quality versus the quantity. Okay? I think Mr. Dillinger is next.
You know, just a quick note about what Virginia was saying about the technologies in the classroom, redefining the role of the technology lead teacher. There's a lot of really great things that are going on and what we're learning together, as we saw, as you said during the Q PBL day, there's lots of things for us to learn together. It's great to have somebody who can help to lead those conversations and not just solve tech issues. So hopefully we can have a little bit of both of those things. As you can see for action five right here, one of the things that a lot of schools are really successful with is using supplementary digital resources to help students to fill in gaps. There are a number of different programs that the schools are using with varying degrees of success. We have been taking a look at those schools and taking a look at the success that they 've had. We like to make things that are universal for every school so that it's not just, if your school has the money to do it, you've got it, if not, you don't have it, but it's made to be available to all the schools in the district. So there's money set aside to do that. Also, of course, we heard a lot about increasing the number Also, of course, we heard a lot about increasing the number of early learning programs and support. A lot of that discussion was even before we had footsteps to write, and so we can continue growing that and training people on its use and expanding its use as well. For action six, it talks about programs and intervention services. It talks about increasing instructional aid support and intervention programs. That's primarily for our fourth, fifth, sixth, and third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes that intervention programs, most of the intervention programs have an additional adult in the classroom to help work with small groups, to help to increase the quality of the instruction, but not all of them. Just want to make sure that every single one of those intervention classrooms has an instructional aid who's there to assist with the intervention programs. Intervention programs are some very immediate academic students in our district, so we want to make sure that they get the best quality service. And we also see a hole in our Spanish language arts intervention. We have students in dual immersion classes who need additional Spanish language support. So we want to provide that support for them as well. Mrs. Sanders already mentioned the NASA STEM Academy. That would be on Saturdays for two thousand six, up to two thousand six hundred and sixty-five students that we're really excited about. And of course, so many set asides that students can have additional outside of the classroom working opportunities.
Is that another... Is that...are those field trips?
I think they could be field trips, absolutely. There's other experiences.
Yes, it is. We help fund the transportation to science camp for those sixth graders that come from our LCAP, the schools that choose to go. For schools that choose not to go, we provide funding if they would like to do local field trips for science study, pinnacles, plobo's, the Elkhorn Slough. We also find activities like a universal promiscency at the O B and fourth grade swimming.
Okay.
Well, so for English language learners professional development, we would like to offer training and support our academic coaches and teachers by hiring consultants to help our English language learners. As you know, our English language learners are being spec for a while, so we need a lot of support, teachers need support, so we would hire consultants to work with our teachers. And also, we would help provide professional development for our dual immersion teachers. And we have a couple of schools already that offer this program. And action eight, ELP, English Language Learners' Support Progress Monitoring. We've already talked about a local assessment to measure English language development. As you know, the CELT, it's only given, provided once a year, and it's not formative assessment. So we want to bring something that is given continuous, maybe every six to eight weeks, we don't know yet, but bring something that should help our teachers identify the needs of our students. For action nine, English Instruction, increase funding for ELD, instructional program material. Our teachers need that. And we side allocations and support, eighteen percent of the funding will go for classified personnel to supervise. This, we're hiring a lot of classified employees, so they need, lack a personnel manager to assist in the English resource department.
Okay, then the area of school culture and climate going on now to goal two. We got a lot of good feedback from parents and from all stakeholders about the Saturday school, the academic recovery program. One of the things that parents did want to see was some sort of curriculum standards that not all sites reported that they saw a lot of rigor, and they wanted to see enrichment. And they also, but most importantly, if we're going to have it, it needs to be offered in every school. We did not have staff that was willing to, available, I shouldn't say willing, able to work on weekends at that, so we have to do some more recruiting. And then for action two, one other thing that really came out in theme was to invest some time and some resources in our best program. Our families really like the best program. They want to see more training for the best, they're called CASs, homework assistant and supervisor on activities, and more enrichment in there too. Another thing that came up is that our parents and other stakeholders reported that they don't see restorative justice practices being implemented consistently at all school sites. And so one of the things that we have gathered here is here is to do some, not only professional development, but to contract with our restorative justice partners to go to sites and work with all of them to make sure that we have playground mediators, you know, the kids doing peer mediation, and they train the kids to do that, and they work with staff, and they work with administrators on restorative approaches to discipline for tier-two and tier-three behaviors. Another big one, and that is expanding the Olvea's bullying program, bullying prevention program. We will be adding five additional sites next year. And then for student support, one of the things that we do not have at this time are district coaches to coordinate and support the PBIS activities at school sites. And so by the next board meeting, we should have a job description to bring to you for that. And then finally, action four, safety, we are funding crossing guards at twelve sites. I think we all know that that is a priority for our parents, for our community, for our staff. They see sometimes in many instances, many locations where children are at risk, and so we want to make sure we have them there. It's his twelve sites because we do not have walkers to Verona Academy. And it's currently understood that the most of the students who attend Verona Meadows are bused in, and then Dangerous Avenue, which is across Caia Adobe, has that over, over the road blockway. So those two schools were excluded at this point in time. It could be added if there was any...
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay.
Back?
Change?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. It comes to safety. Are we going to be training parents or are we going to be training mothers?
These will be employees.
Employees of the district?
This is funding crossing guards.
And they will be give paid.
Yes, they should be employees. My understanding in the past is that these are people who are essentially, who are like new supervisors, and then they would be paid an hour in the morning and an hour after school to assist.
Twenty dollars an hour.
I don't have that.
Just a wish.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to goal three, parent and community involvement. One of the things that we... Sorry. I want to think that we're bringing proposals to hire, just to communicate your office and this, the goal is that this person would share positive messages about our district, also assist with the website, and to have accurate information, to uniform it and all of that. And under action two, parent involvement, we are bringing parent coordinators for all, we're proposing to bring parent coordinators for all school sites, three hours a day. Currently, the schools are funding their own parent coordinators. They pay with their own site funds, but this is, the LCAP, oh, it's supplemental concentration, we pay for it. Now, if the schools are interested in having more hours, they can allocate those funds. And then also increase funding for parent events. We want to bring our parents into our schools. And then for action three, for parent engagement, this is, provide funding for parent leadership training such as FEEDP, FEEDP's African Institute for Quality Education. It helps parents become educational avenues for their children. And then another great program that we hear a lot of districts are using is Parenting as Partners, and also it's leadership for parents. So those are the types of things that we want to bring to our district under that. And then to continue, begin with goal three, parent and community involvement, action four, the Family Resource Center and Foster Youth. We want to add a type of support to increase outreach and direct services to students and families. Currently, we just have Ms. O'Callaghan in that position, and she has one, one person that assists her, and there's too many students and families that need assistance. We want to have, be able to publicize the resources and services that are provided throughout the district for all, you know, for all of our fourteen schools. And we want to extend hours to be open during the summer because, I mean, Cheryl right now, she's working, she's, you know, they need a lot, the families, they need assistance. They can't just, we can't just stop. And then it's in learning enrichment programs, the homeless and foster youth. That way you can show O'Callaghan could really focus on that, bringing programs like for Saturday or after school, or someone's programs for this specific family. And then action five, parent education, increase funding for parent training workshops and including digital literacy. We want to contract with, what is it called, Ms. O'Callaghan?
Worked here.
Computers and we would loan, lend computers to our homes, to our families for them to get and take home and provide all that training and resources for that.
Okay. I do have, I'll take questions here or comments, but I do want to point out an error. We all, trying to be very transparent on this third slide, where it says hire additional classroom teachers, and I said ten. Ten were the number that we're hiring this year, but we have funding for up to fifteen in this current LCAP, and we hope very much that we can find. Question? Yes, Ms. Kip.
Can you go back to goal two? If right, look at action four.
Oh, nice. Yeah, we read it before. Thank you for that.
I'll give that. That's good.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
What I...
Yes, you can.
That action four, I do think that there's additional funds within what you allocated and that Verona Meadows is, has most of their children bused in. And so maybe additional supervision time, not crossing guard, but in actually supervision.
Breakfast monitor.
Yes, because it's pretty hairy there.
You're right.
Kids dropping off on those two entry points, and I mean, if you've been there, you can see they're standing out there. So I would just suggest that we include them in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not so much as a question as just something to consider with LCAP funds. I worked in this for nine years. This last year, I was hired by Santa Rita District, and they're actually using their LCAP, they hire music and PE teachers. I saw that under goal one. And what we do is, we are not actually teachers per se, we are actually relief or collaboration. So for an hour and a half every single week, every teacher gets to collaborate with their entire grade level. And I was doing that for the, wow, if I had an hour and a half every week with my teammates, what could we get done? And I see the emails for the teachers. Sometimes they're told like, hey, look at the AR data, figure out what's happening with the ELLs. And hey, your class really succeeded. What are you doing differently that's making your ELLs move up and all that? And they really get a lot done in that. And other times, they just collaborate, run copies, and improve their teaching and ability. So that's, and I know Alisa also does something similar, but they hire super subs, so the teachers don't have to do all the planning, and they just sit down and collaborate, like one day every few weeks or so. So just other options, things you might consider with LCAP.
And actually, we do plan on having the music teachers and the PE teachers and the art teachers. Oh, sorry. The art teachers travel together and essentially saturate a school so there can be teacher release.
Comments? A quick comment, I'll be less than three minutes. Fright Garden, Mission Park School. Yes, we always give credit, or credits to. Thank you for the crossing guard allocation. We've been talking about that a lot lately. And yeah, Martha actually mentioned this last Thursday. I think it was Thursday. We talked about that. I've lost track of the date. So on to the next thing. Here's a suggestion for goal number three, I think it was, parent involvement. Can you consider as a board allocating some funds to actually broadcast and record, record and broadcast these board meetings so that we don't have to do it? Take that responsibility away from us, please. The reason we keep showing up is we feel like we're kind of the crossing guard, trying to stop cars from barely crosswalk. If I walk away from that responsibility, then I, I don't know. We just want to make sure that everything is properly recorded and that the public has access to the information that has been disseminated and talked about at these board meetings. As it stands now, you do have the ability to post these things on your website, but I noticed it hasn't been posted for quite some time. There are no videos up. And the videos, when they do get posted, they're four months behind, choppy video, bad audio, can't understand what's going on through a security camera up there. Make an investment as the county and city does, it's reporting and making it accessible as well for our bilingual population so that they can be a part of this, these board proceedings. Then they'll be more productive and involved in the decision affecting their children. So maybe that's another goal that we can consider in the future. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Can I just make a comment? The LCAP, well, number one, I would just like to publicly thank Mrs. Sanders and team for, I can't even tell you how many hundreds of hours is spent in this process. It's a tremendous investment. It's a tremendous investment of time and certainly time and place to resources. But one of the things that you don't know is that our days are not eight-hour days. They're many fifteen-hour days because they're here, until late hours. Engaging the stakeholders at these meetings where they're actually reporting this out. So just publicly, I'd like to thank you for all of your efforts in making this, and I can't even tell you, met twice weekly to pull this together. You know, our state government has a great ideas, and this new funding mechanism for local control takes a tremendous amount of time, and many districts have hired staff just to do this, just to manage the LCAP and to measure, we haven't even talked about the metric system. The other piece along with this is the whole metrics that comes in measuring the results and the impact of the actions around this document, which is another requirement. It's a tremendous amount of staff time involved in this, and I just want to commend you for your many long nights, your many long days, meaning if you have three-hour meetings during the day, that's something else that's not getting done outside of that time. So I want to recognize you for those efforts and thank you for your dedication to the process.